Mr. Atterberry?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
I am. No, I'm not.
Ms. Marburger?
Here.
Mr. Melling?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Andrew?
Here. All right. Do we have any visitors that wish to speak before the board now that aren't on the... Okay, we'll continue on with communications.
Short month, nothing with my report this evening.
Okay, so... Let it be at the end, right? Yep. All right, so we'll start with the Senate.
Okay. I'm going to listen.
Mr. Curtin? Okay, one there. Both the same. We welcome Mr. Turner, uh, Mr., not Mr. Turner, but Mr. Curtin. So we have an oath that you have to take that's just you will read with Mr. Andrew. Okay? That's what we have to do. Ready, Mr. Curtin?
Ready.
Okay. Before taking his rehearsed seat on the board, they shall take the following oath of office. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office, a member of the Board of Education of Taylorville Community School District Number Three in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as faithful protector of the school and its district assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek to hear a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting, and I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. I swear to you and as a new member of the board for Taylorville School District. You are now a legal member and ready to go with this board. We do welcome you.
I'll let you know.
Now he is a... He is now officially present. He is present. All right.
Should he sign this also?
No.
No, not that one. All right, we have the rule of the amendments for May and special June 7 meetings. Is there any chance to look over them? Are there any changes or... Okay, no changes. Now, review of approval of the claims. Nothing really to know going on the claims, Mr. Andrew. It's pretty standard at this time of the year. Anybody else find anything in there that had questions on? All right, we'll proceed to the treasurer's report.
Yeah, um, there's a couple of things in the treasurer's report that I had in your packet. I talked a little bit about that with the budget when we were dealing with the budget amendment and, you know, it is what it is. And if they don't, there's really not a lot that's within our control other than the fact that we have a positive cash flow. I did visit with the treasurer and the... She indicated that the tax bills will be going out at the end of the month as has been done in the previous years, which is a good thing because we don't get general state aid in July and particularly if we don't get the last two general state aid payments, we're going to need cash flow. And we can rely on that first property tax installment to provide that, provide the necessary cash flow to get us going. There has been some discussion by a representative up north that schools should not open their doors in August if they don't get a budget. Just keep them closed until there is a budget. There will be some districts that depending upon the general state aid payments, depending upon property tax payments, won't be able to open their doors. They just don't have the cash on hand to be able to do that. And so I think that that's where it is in terms of budget talks. Not much is happening in Springfield that I'm aware of on a budget. If anything, it'll probably be a last minute budget similar to what it was last year, probably into July if there is a budget. Definitely the pressure will be there for preschool through 12th grade that they do a budget of some type to do that. And so they're kind of in limbo on that. Last week, the House was on vacation, believe it or not. They took the week off. We've got all kinds of problems and they go on vacation, right? So they may be back in session soon. Senate Bill One did pass, both the Senate and the House. It's sitting. It has not been released to the governor yet. It's a procedural move by the Senate to where they're holding the bill. I think they're waiting to see what happens with the budget discussions. I think that, you know, once they release it to the governor, then of course he has a period of time to either sign it, veto it, or, you know, whatever with it. I did put some articles in there concerning Senate Bill One that today the Springfield Journal Register said that the governor and the secretary of education are 90% okay with the bill. Well, 90% should be a go. I mean, it's not like a 50% or a 40%. If you're happy with it 90%, you might call yourself a winner and move on, right? In terms of that. I did put in some articles from Senator Menard. We were very fortunate. I indicated it at the last meeting. I did put in the Cranes Report where we had our student, Jack Curtin, was quoted in there in terms of Senate Bill, in terms of the Illinois finances. I gave you also an impact sheet of Senate Bill One. Taylorville is a Tier One district. We're one of the districts that does better than CPS. And if you look at the breakdown, you can see our school district is very definitely very bright orange. When you take a look at our district, it's kind of one that's kind of lengthy and kind of has that little squidly up on the top. So we're definitely one that does benefit from Senate Bill One. I did put in the fact sheet in terms of that, that piece of legislation that Taylorville, little over $300,000 in, over the previous years. Colleen and I have made it very clear even when we've talked to the folks that are doing this, that more importantly is that they give us the right to hold harmless, that they keep us exactly where we... That's always been our style. Keep us where we are so we don't lose money. That's the biggest piece. We can't afford to lose money in this situation. The formula was blowing up last year. There is no school formula as they know it because when they gave the stopgap money to districts, that blew the formula up to keep everybody the same. So we're continuing to push forward with Senate Bill One. I don't know, the governor might sign it too. I mean, he's indicated he'll veto, but you never know. He might sign the thing and then it goes into law. The bigger point is, is that they were correct in the article. It's going to take money to make this formula work. It's just like any other formula. You've got to have money. And they funded this at $350 million. So that's money that comes into the system would be $350 million. Out of that, Taylorville would see an increase of $318,000, right, over the previous year. So that's the important fact is that, you know, we need, we need school funding reform, but we need a budget to make things work in terms of revenues, in terms of a variety of, for a variety of reasons, we need a budget. We can't go, you know, we most likely will start the third year without a budget because the fiscal year ends June 30th. So, and it takes a three-fifths vote now. So it takes more than just, more than just a simple majority to pass, pass a budget. So we'll see where that, where that comes out. I did, Representative Born did vote no, and we had a meeting with Representative Born. Dr. Lett and I do have a letter to the editor that is coming out about Representative Born voting no and how the districts, for district, we gained $3.8 million. The sticking point is Chicago, but at some point in time, we do have to get over that factor and we do have to start looking out for the common good of kids in the state of Illinois. And if they're 90% pleased with it, they're not happy with Chicago, as I indicated, this isn't Fantasy Island. This is a reality that Chicago is part of the, part of the big picture whether you, you know, whether you're in favor of Chicago or not because it is the largest school district in the state of Illinois. It has the highest poverty count of any district in the state of Illinois. So it does have to be at the table. And they're dealing with it the most equitable way they can, they can deal with it, but it is going to take money. The backlog of bills without a budget, that will go to $14 billion. And then that, that number will continue to grow. If we don't receive a categorical payment, which here we are June 12th, we're not anticipating getting one. Thank goodness, we're only short one in a budget instead of budgeting all four and being short three, okay? We budgeted conservatively and as we put the budget together for next year, I don't know what we're going to budget yet because they always three from last year. Do you budget the three from last year or do you budget two? So, I mean, those are some, those are some things that Colleen and I will be working with the board on as we put that budget together based on that, based on that information. That's the significant piece of it, especially when it comes to transportation. Without those transportation funds, that just adds pressure onto the IT fund. And then special education payments are lagging too behind in terms of getting those funds to educate those kids. So we're still in a wait-and-see mood. Taylorville is not in a panic mode. Eleven years ago, though, this would have been catastrophic, but we're not, we're not at that point. So that's where we are on the treasurer's report. I will keep you posted on Senate Bill One. It has passed. So once it's released to the governor, the governor is the last, is the last answer to that. And if it comes back, then it's, then it's got to go, go back in for folks to override. But our biggest issue right now, if you talk to legislators, is the budget. That is the biggest, biggest priority. Get a budget in terms of how to do that. You know, Illinois is one, one, one status above junk. They got downgraded after they didn't pass, they didn't do anything come May. And believe it or not, we're seeing some articles on that. I'm glad we're not borrowing right now because that definitely is going to have an impact on school district borrowing capacity. Why? Because the state of Illinois is the collateral because that's where the payments come from, you know, that are kind of the backing of, of school districts. So I'm glad we're not having to borrow for any projects or anything of that nature that we have that. In the event that cash does get tight and, and something just completely falls off the map, then the board will pass tax anticipation warrants, okay? We're not anticipating how to do that. We already have negotiations in place with banks. We do have a substantial line of credit that's already negotiated as well for borrowing capacity, so if need be in terms of that. The sad thing is, is that that costs interest. That costs, that costs taxpayer money, you know, in terms of that to go out and have to borrow for your educational purposes. It's one thing to borrow for your projects. So, you know, we feel fortunate that we're not in that. That, the only time that would happen is if indeed the treasurer just collapsed, you know, and we didn't get our property tax payments until like October, November, November and December. We're not anticipating that. So that's our treasurer's report.
Have they listed one they're going to send out?
Top of the month. It's right on schedule. I was up there visiting with Betty Asmussen last week and she indicated that everything's good and they're going to get that out as quickly as possible.
And I heard on the way in tonight that the guys that evaluate the bond status said if the budget doesn't pass by July 1st, Illinois will be done with that.
Doesn't surprise me. Doesn't surprise me. Well, I heard a lot of people, it hurt the Chicago Public School System that has to borrow a tremendous amount of money to stay afloat. You know, and I indicated this, you know, the Chicago Public School System has a budget of 1.5 billion. I use the word billion. Taylorville's budget is two pennies on Chicago's budget. You know, it is a huge, huge budget in terms of that, you know, when you think about a billion dollar budget, you know, 1.5 billion's a lot of money, you know? Makes our 25 million look relatively small, you know, on the scale of things. So that's real bad.
Okay. Consideration of overnight treasurer requests.
Yes, Mrs. Schaper and Ms. Kink have put in two trips. They're in your board packet. These are annual trips that our students take. There is no cost to the district and we recommend that you approve those with your consent.
Okay.
Please approve the...
Excuse me?
Under the approval of the senator.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Atterberry?
Yes.
Ms. Marburger?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Melling?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
And Mr. Curtin?
He's in?
Okay. We're doing another time now.
He's in.
Sorry, Mr. Attarberry?
He's in.
Okay.
He's in. He's in.
You're already half of a vote.
No, he's in. He's in.
Okay. A new business. Consideration of the 2017-18 elementary textbook request.
Yes, in your packet is the breakdown, is the breakdown of the elementary consumables. As you can see, last year, we had FY total of 30,0516. This year, the total was 21,656 for elementary consumable books. You can see where we're getting those books from Follett and McGraw-Hill. We recommend that you approve those as presented.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Atterberry?
Second.
Ms. McConnell? All in favor?
I don't think you wrote on this one.
Roll call.
Mr. Atterberry?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Ms. Marburger?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Melling?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. Okay. Consideration of general supply goods.
Included in your packet is the general supplies for the district this year. The FY 18 total is 10,727. Last year's total was 11,06912. So we recommend that you approve the supply bid as presented.
Do I have a motion except? Mr. Atterberry? Ms. McConnell, second. Do you have a roll call?
Mr. Atterberry?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Ms. Marburger?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Melling?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. Consideration of property casualty insurance renewal rate.
Yeah, um, the property casualty renewal rate came in. It's an increase of 6,966.80 or 5.45%. The reason for the increase is, is because we've added technology to the district, especially with the STEM lab coming at Taylorville Junior High School, the additional Chromebooks. We've, we've increased what it's worth in case something were to happen to that. So that is the difference is the things that we've done to the policy. It's not overused, but it is what we've added to the policy.
Any questions on that? Do I have a motion? Accept it? Mr. Atterberry, second. Ms. Marburger? Do you need a roll call? Do we send it?
Yes.
Mr. Atterberry?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Ms. Marburger?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Melling?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. Consideration of resolution asserting wage for the construction trades in Christian County.
This is required by law that we approve this. It is law. We have to publish this then saying that the board has passed this resolution for the minimum wage.
You have a discussion?
No, we've had some lengthy discussion with this.
I will have the symbolic no vote on this one because I think it just costs us too much money. We should be able to fill a bathroom for a bathroom cost.
And you're also starting to see some states that are passed. We don't have to follow it just to really wait. So maybe it'll come around eventually. Do I have a motion to exhaust the...
We do need to pass this.
No, you cannot. You cannot be counting more. Ms. McConnell, second. Mr. Melling? Do you need a roll call? Roll call?
Mr. Atterberry?
No.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Ms. Marburger?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Melling?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. Consideration of the appointment of district treasurer.
Yes, each year we need to appoint Colleen German as our, as our district treasurer so that she has the ability to do the things for the district.
Is this a, this is just renewal what she already does?
Yep, right. Do I have a motion? Ms. McConnell, second. Ms. Marburger? Someone in favor?
No, you need a roll call.
I don't think I have a...
Yeah. She does. Roll call.
Mr. Atterberry?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Ms. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Melling?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes.
Consideration of nurse building.
Oh, we have one of our nurses in here. One of the things that we've had come up this year is the fact that, and we had some discussion about this, I know it actually had an impact on three of our buildings, correct, Ms. Mooney? The pesky little critters called bedbugs found their way into our elementary, our junior high and high school facility. And basically, we, we, this would just be an administrative procedure in terms of how we address bedbugs with a protocol and then how we notify parents and we put it with the registration materials. We do have protocols for asthma. We do have protocols for administering drugs. We have protocols for students with diabetes. We have protocols with students that have EpiPens. This would just be a guiding tool for our, for our buildings and that we can reference with parents. Anything you would like to add, Ms. Mooney?
I, we just thought we needed this because so many people have their own ideas on how it should be handled and we just wanted it all handled the same way regardless of where somebody brings it in.
Mr. Attarberry?
So this is something that the nurses are approval of?
Yes, we, we wrote it.
They wrote it. No, I did not write this.
Is that grammar acto error that's on page three?
And we didn't follow the standards that Illinois puts out.
Yes, and that's typically, we have, we have life standards that we follow now. This is something that was new to us this year. So therefore, we, we're just creating a way to handle that, a standard way to handle that. And our nurses, you know, this is their body of work. This is what they deal with. They have to make the phone calls to the parents and work with families and that. So if this, you know, helps make the situation better, then we recommend that you adopt.
Do I have a motion? Okay. Ms. Marburger, if I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Do I have a...
Yep, you can just say it.
All in favor, say it.
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have the SAT scores?
Yes, that would be Mr. Hutchison. And then he's also put some other information up here as well.
Mr. Matt, you want to come up?
Sir. Second. Good. This evening, we're going to do a review of the SAT scores. On April 5th, Taylorville High School and all, all high schools in the state of Illinois took the SAT for the first time. A little historical perspective for you. Juniors in high school have to take a standardized test for their college preparedness or college readiness. In years past, we had taken the ACT and then the ACT turned into Illinois' Prairie State Achievement Exam, which was a two-day test. The first day was the ACT test and the second day was work keys. A few years into the Prairie State Achievement Exam, the state of Illinois added the science component to that. That lasted one year and then the Illinois had a, the state of Illinois had fallen out, I believe, with SAT and with ACT, so they went to SAT. So we went one year where there was no tests. This year, we're back to standardized testing and we're taking the SAT test. So what we're going to do this evening is kind of review how we did this year. So demographic information, total students tested this year was 175. Two students are not accounted for in the data and that is the fault of the College Board. We had a set of twins with the same last name and very similar first names and they actually, they got the test, but they didn't put it in the right area. That's on there and we're still waiting to get that information back. Thought you might find that interesting. We did test 15 special education students out of the 175. Eighty-seven boys, eighty-six girls, and then of course the two, that's the asterisk, we had two, two students not accounted for. About the scores, for the SAT, your, the total that you could get if you got every question right is a 1,600. For evidence-based reading and writing, we'll call that ERW from now on. If you got everything right in that, in ERW, you could get an 800. In math, you could earn an 800 as well. That would be your 1,600 total. The 11th grade benchmark scores for ERW, a 460. You're a grade level if you can score a 460 in ERW or in math, a 510, you're a grade level. SAT uses college and career readiness benchmarks and those are 20 points higher than the 11th grade benchmarks. You can see ERW at 480 and math is 530. The mean scores, Taylorville High School, their average score was 985. The state average is 1022 and the national average is 998. We are obviously disappointed. We put in some work, we thought we would do better than that. We know that we have something to work on at this point. And we'll all kind of get into a plan that we have to kind of get to that, but we were disappointed with our score. We'll talk a little bit about those scores, those mean scores, because they truly were mean for us. All schools per composite, again, we were 985. Forty-three percent of our students met the 11th grade benchmarks on both the English portion and the math portion. That is 73 students. And then in our English, reading and writing, our average was 496. Sixty-six percent of our students met the 11th grade benchmark. And math, we were, our average was 489. Forty-six percent of our students met the 11th grade benchmark. We, excuse me, we realize that that is obviously an area of concern for us to work on. So we know we have a challenge ahead of us and we're going to all kind of go into our plan for that. Went into some more analysis, we kind of went in, what, how did we do without the IP students? There was only... There was only 15 of them. 1007 would have been our composite, 5007 for English and 500 for math. This is a histogram on our scores. If you'll get out the composite score distribution page, it looks like this. That is a breakdown of all the scores. This is something that I put on, on your table. That's a score of how every student that took the test did. To get to the meet level, if you will, you need to be right about there, about the 10, 20, 1,000 is a good benchmark, so these, these students over here generally did pretty well, it's these students over here we're concerned about. Our top score, for those of you keeping score, was a 1470. That's really good. We had a couple of students at 1390 and then they kind of go down from there, so just kind of a breakdown of the scores for you. We did some analysis. Math score frequency, if you'll look at the form called math score frequency, 11th grade benchmark, if you can look at that one. Looks much like this one. Can you see that? It's a breakdown of our scores and what we did, we weren't nearly as disappointed, to be honest, we did with our English, although we obviously know we can, we can do better there as well, but our math scores were low. So what I'm going to do this evening is kind of use some of our math for this. So if we'll go back to that score, that frequency score, you can see for all students, these are students that did not meet 11th grade benchmarks. So the students that scored in the 500, we had four students score 500. That's 26 answers correct for the math portion. They were one question away from meeting. If they'd got one more right, they'd have met. 490, we had eight students with that score. If they'd have got two more right, they would have met. 480, we had seven students there. If they'd have got three more right, we'd have been there. So we really feel like we are close, but we needed to be over the hump, so. Let's do some additional breakdown of those scores. The math test outcomes based on track. At Taylorville High School, we have three tracks of math. We have what we consider the lower track math, that's students that as freshmen, when they come in, they start out with our pre-algebra two, okay? Our middle track is algebra one, as freshmen that come in, they're taking algebra one. Our high track students come in and they're taking geometry nine, okay? Let's go back up to our low track students. We had 66 students that took the test this year as juniors that started as freshmen taking pre-algebra two. Of that 66 students, only seven of them met the 11th grade benchmark. So we did some research into that and I'll tell you what we found out. Fifty-nine of those students did not. Our middle track students, again, students that started at algebra one, test freshman here, 34 met, 27 did not. Our high track students, again, students that came in, highest math track, were geometry nine, 37 of those students met, four did not. Down here, we have our practical math students, that's our special education self-contained students. None of those students met, 10 did not. If you remember, I said we had 15 special education students. Five of those students are up here in our co-taught classes, so just a little information for you. Some considerations. Taylorville High School offered eight SAT preparation sessions that will help every Saturday from February 4th through April 1st free of charge to students. Teachers volunteered to teach these sessions. Students signed up to attend. They started out well. We had 39 students sign up. We were kind of excited about it. Our first session, we had several students. Our last set, excuse me, our last session was a math session and we only had seven students sign up. That was right before the test, but all the other ones were in that 27 to, you know, probably 17, somewhere in there. Our sessions, we had three reading and English sessions. We had three math sessions, two writing sessions. We will offer these study sessions again next year. Let's get into that data analysis that I was talking about. Why were we scoring so low? And here's what we found out. Students in the lowest math track, that's the pre-algebra two, are not able to access much of the content on the math portion because they are never exposed to the curriculum by the time they take the test in April of their junior year. Here's what I mean by that. Those, those students, the SAT test is very high-level math, that's, it's algebra two, it's geometry, kind of getting very complicated. As we go on to the next slide, you'll see, those students don't get to that high algebra level and I'll explain what we're going to do to solve that problem. Honestly, this is kind of a good thing that we know where we're at, we know where to go, we know where to improve. Let's look at some of this bottom information. This is the class of 2018. Sixty-six of our 175 students tested started in the pre-algebra two track. Sixty-six of those students never got to that complex mathematical content that they needed to score well on the SAT. That's our opinion, that's what we believe. That is the juniors. The sophomores, we have 48 students that started in the pre-algebra two track. How about this one? This year's freshman, 90 students of 200-ish are starting in the pre-algebra two track. Good news is, we were already going to change this up long before the ACT, excuse me, the SAT test came about and I'll go into that here in a bit. Our action plan. This is what we want to do. We want to move our most successful pre-algebra two students to algebra one. We're going to do that based on grades, how they, how they did in pre-algebra, teacher recommendations, what teachers think, okay, that student can handle that, and math schools. So I'm going to get into math scores, this is our, along with doing SAT for the first time. We're doing math for the first time. We do that three through 10, but this is the first year we're actually going to have some data that we're going to be able to help these students along, so, and I'll be able, I'll share that data with you here in a second. We're looking at potentially 27 students to start off. Here's a concern that we have. There may be some parent pushback because their child is no longer getting an A or a B that they're getting in pre-algebra. They're doing really well. Well, we want to challenge them. We want to expose them to that, that content, so they may not make that A in algebra one or what, what have you, but that, that, but that is a concern just for us to think about. As I told you earlier, what we were going to do, we were already thinking of changing this lower track by integrating more geometry. Currently, as a freshman, if you're on the low track, you take pre-algebra two. As a sophomore, you'll take algebra A. As a junior, you take algebra B. We want to change that. We want to change this to, it's called integrated algebra and geometry one. More algebra, more geometry. As a sophomore, those students in the lower track, then will take integrated algebra and geometry two, and then as juniors, they would take integrated algebra and geometry three. I'm sure you're wondering, well, how come there's no senior year down there? The state of Illinois only requires three years of mathematics to graduate. Here's our middle track. Student, students come in as freshmen in the middle track, they take algebra one. Their sophomore year, they take plane geometry. Their junior year, they take algebra two. So we know that they're getting algebra two content up until April, so hopefully that exposure will help those, those students. And then our high track students, as freshmen, geometry nine, algebra two 10, as sophomores and then pre-athletes. If you will look at this form, the integrated algebra and geometry one, it's basically three pages of what kind of content is going to be in the, the new algebra and geometry course, the new low track courses. We were going to do this long before we got the SAT results, but since we're doing this, we're renaming this, we thought we'd kind of give you a historical perspective of where we're at.
Is geometry nine different from plane geometry?
It's a, that's kind of the intro, if you will, that's an intro geometry for our, our high, high-level math students, so they're already getting the math, geometric concepts.
What I'm saying is-
They're getting it earlier than this.
But is there a difference in the class?
Yeah, I think it's, it's going to be a little bit more challenging than what this is.
Okay, the algebra, the geometry nine.
Additional action plan, we've gotten together, the administrators, the counseling department, the math chair. I've talked with the math department, this very day we got these results, I kind of got together with the math department and said, where are we at? What are we doing? We have met with members of the junior high. I know Mr. Bruder has talked with Mrs. Vincent. Our math teachers have spoken. I've talked to Mr. Kopek, just kind of where we're at, you know? And this is not a finger-pointing thing, this is like, what can we do to help our students? One of the things that we're looking at right here, Khan Academy. Have you heard of Khan Academy? SAT has partnered with Khan Academy. If you haven't seen, I should have brought it up here. So what students will do is they will take a diagnostic test on, it's online. Please look it up when you have an opportunity. And you take this diagnostic test and it tells you exactly where you are math-wise and you'll find out that you're, as a student, okay, I'm only at eighth grade level math, I'm only at seventh grade, whatever it is. And it, it gives you activities to kind of enhance your skills so that you'll get back, back up to grade level. It gives you awards and kids like that kind of stuff. I mean, it is really, I, I mess with it, it is, my own son has worked on it, not enough, but he's going to more. It is a very valuable tool that we can use. Like I said, it will give you an individualized practice for each student. You can do a practice SAT test on there. They actually did this on one of their testing sessions, or practice SAT sessions on a Saturday, so it, it is useful. What we want to do is utilize that, Khan Academy, as part of our math curriculum, especially at the pre-algebra two level. And we also want to, students that scored low on math tests, we'll get to this, we want to put, put students who are below benchmarks based on their math test scores and teacher recommendations into our advisories, that's our structured study hall, at the end of the day, with math or English teachers to work on Khan Academy. So that, you know, at least a couple of days a week, they will be working. They're going to get some credit for that. I mean, we want students to work on it, so you have to give them credit for that, so something we're thinking about. This, down here, utilize the college board score reporting portal. SAT is very organized with what they do. I've been able to look at exactly what questions our students missed by student, what answer they chose, what the correct answer was. Our math department is going to be able to take that information and find out, okay, as teachers, what do we need to, where are, what do we need to concentrate on? What do we need to stress? So that's something that we're going to be working on. Obviously, I told you that we're going to collaborate with the junior high, we're going to work some more with the Khan Academy, so.
Are there many practice tests on the internet for the kids? I know with the ACT, there was a ton of them.
That's all part of, SAT has tons of practice tests on that, and through Khan Academy, through Khan Academy. Okay, let's look at, hold on one second, folks. Let's start with this one right here. I thought I would also share with you our, our math scores. Okay, this is scores. You have a copy of this, I thought I'd put it in color, it looks a little bit better. This is the first year that we are utilizing math scores. We do them three times a year. The FM stands for fall math, WM, winter math, SM, spring math, then the readings follow, fall reading, winter reading, spring reading. The following chart illustrates aggregated class grade averages for the 2016-17 math administrations, again, three of those. The sophomore class demonstrated growth at every point in math and reading. The spring math score for the class represented, represented, or excuse me, represents achievement at the 81st percentile nationwide and the spring reading score for the class represents achievement at the 68th percentile. So you can see right here, concentrating on the math at this point, this is the national average right here. The blue, we are the red. So the sophomores are doing very well. We are above grade level as sophomores, okay? Kind of go down here a little bit more for you. College readiness analysis indicates that 88% of the sophomore class scored in the 59th to 69th percentile range while, which correlates to an ACT, if you want to go to that, sub-score of a 22 or an SAT score of 1110. So that is much better than what we did this year. I think there's one more that's not on there. The college reading readiness analysis indicates that 56, 56% of the sophomore class scored in the 59th to 69th percentile range. That correlates to an ACT score of 22 or an SAT score of 1110. If I can get that, I'll kind of show you the, that's our sophomores. And I will. Which one is that? Hold on one second. How about that one right there? And it's also them.
I think it's open farm.
Is it open farming?
It was the first one you wronged.
It's open. How about this one? How about, I, ninth grade. Now, these numbers are not, not as flattering, but again, remember the number that I gave you, those students, those 90 students that started out in the lowest math track. This chart, again, it's our three administrations. The freshman class demonstrated growth at every point in math, but they did not meet growth target in winter reading. The spring math score for the class represents an achievement at the 56th percentile nationwide and the spring reading score for the class represents an achievement of the 51st percentile. What math uses, correct me if I'm wrong, is the 50th percentile or grade level, so, so that's, so that's kind of where we're at.
Do you know why you have such a large 90, 90 students this time?
Well, when we, here's what we do for math. When they come up from the junior high, we, we don't really know anything about them. We haven't had any math tests at this, at this point, so we, we go based on teacher recommendation and that's obviously going to change. Now that we have math scores, we'll be able to see exactly where students' ability levels are.
That seems like a large jump.
We've, we've always had, you know, I shouldn't say always, but math has been a challenge for, for us, so. I think this, in a way, this SAT information is a good thing. The math testing is a good thing for us, so we can kind of find out exactly where our students are, things that we need to do to assist those students to become more successful and also maybe what we need to do as, as educators to better prepare our students.
Is there any testing in the junior high that correlates to the-
They also do math testing. This is the first year.
Well, then we'll have a better idea after that.
I wish I had better news for you in regards to our ACT scores, I really, I, if there is a positive that SAT test was the day after our referendum vote and, and all the kids showed up, 100% of our kids showed up, I was like, this is awesome. So there's our positive, 100% of our kids showed up to take it. But we, we definitely have work to do, so. Questions?
Now, the department heads come back through and tackling this too, right?
Absolutely, this is a, absolutely. This is not, and it's not just department heads, this will be the math department and the English department, we've got, every department's going to, this will be part of our school improvement goal is to improve in math and English.
And English, do not forget that concept.
Not at all, not at all.
We are not wizards in English either. I think that's-
I chose math.
You chose math, but if you look at it, their scores are very close in terms of that. I think that the, the thing that, that's disappointing is, is when we didn't meet the state level.
I'm not, of course, all of you, but I was very upset. I think Pena did better than us.
That is correct.
And, and I think we have better students and better parents and better faculty than Pena. I just think they need to step up and do it.
I, I don't disagree with you.
One of the things that will be coming out too, and working with the administration at the high school, Taylorville High School is going to be going through a real substantial change over the next couple of years in terms of readiness and redefining readiness at the high school level. And they will be coming, we will be coming to the board with a plan for our freshmen in the incoming freshman class as well as other freshman classes coming into Taylorville High School. And we are working with the administration on, we will be coming to the board, we're working on a dashboard of readiness for all students at Taylorville High School, whether it be for a career, whether it be for college, whatever that is. And the administration is in the process of putting together a dashboard which will really create an indicator of success, whether it be, you know, at a four-year university, whether it be at a two-year, whether it be in those types of situations. So we're going to be redefining Taylorville High School and in terms of the future, in terms of where we're at. I think this year, we've got some great pieces in place with juniors and seniors going out to Lincolnland to take Lincolnland courses. What a great opportunity for kids to be exposed to dual credit. This is going to be the vehicle of the future. We don't have very many faculty that can offer dual credit at Taylorville High School. This is the opportunity to get kids dual credit through Lincolnland, which is transferable in the state of Illinois. CAC- CACC, students are getting dual credit at CACC for the courses that they take out there, or a certificate. Those types of things are extremely important for kids to do that. We have the CEO program, that is the entrepreneur piece of, of it. So, we'll be coming back with a full-fledged plan, an action plan for Taylorville High School in terms of school improvement, in terms of where we need to be. This is a good, a good starting point. You have to start from someplace. A lot of the data was already done. I think that when you look at the math, and I've shared this too, if we, you know, we just can't automatically assume they're going to get a C, or lower than an A or a B, right? We don't know how those kids are going to perform. With good instruction, with good buy-in, they may be extremely successful in terms of that. But I think too, we've talked about looking at down the road, we're making a tremendous investment in our elementary programs with doing some things differently. As we talked about class sizes and our kindergarten, first and second grades are so important. We've put in a new reading curriculum. We are working with mathematics, and I think that out of this situation, or any skill, there needs to be a defining block, right? And then we build down from that. Tell us what the expectations are, and then we can build those skills and build that. And then have those expectations for kids, you know, that we're going to do this, we're going to be able to do this. You do need some basic math to even go out and pass the, the technical math to be part of, part of the trades and those types of things. So, we will be, the administration will be coming in with a full, with a full action plan. It will start in July, and then we will have the whole action plan laid out prior to school starting in August. That way, Mr. Hutchison can take that to Taylorville High School with the plan of action. And really, what I would like is the board to, board basically endorse that plan. You're ultimately the guiding principal of the district, and therefore, there's accountability at that level. Either we make it or we don't make it. And if we don't make it, then there has to be some explanation in terms of, in terms of recreating or re, redefining readiness, in terms of that. That may also involve the administration also visiting another district in Illinois who's quite successful with redefining their high school. And I've shared some of the literature with Mr. Hutchison and Mr. Brew, and I think that that would be part, Mr. Asbury, if department heads come back, this would be on their task, this school improvement, this redefining Taylorville High School would be part of, would be part of the situation in terms of that. So, all of our buildings have school improvement plans, but, and then, but definitely, we're definitely, based on this, we definitely have some work to do. As we build to do better, this is, these are the students we have at Taylorville High School. We have to do better for them. And, so that's, that's where we're at, okay? Thank you, Mr. Hutchison.
Back to this, the test in eleventh grade, you're talking about the low track and old track and high track. What were the numbers of the kids in the low track that started out as freshmen in the sixty-six?
Sixty-six.
Because what you were telling, if I got this right, what you were telling me was that the low track, they're not getting the testing information.
They're not, we don't feel that they're getting the content.
Yeah, so what I'm getting at is, we keep talking about what we're going to do at the high school, but what can we do with these kids at the junior high level to get them prepared?
Yeah, this is-
Because I'm, what I'm hearing is more than just a problem at the high school, and I'm not finger pointing back at the junior high, however, we've got a large percentage of this incoming freshman that are not hitting the middle track. Will wire them.
And that's where I was going back. But as you, as you look at them, where, these freshmen coming in, they're a lot better.
Junior, what's that?
We had, absolutely. So sixty-six, that's juniors, sixty-six, forty-eight, so we're down a little bit, but then we bump up all the way to ninety for this year's freshman.
But you see, it still comes back. We can still challenge those students in the high school with the-
I understand that, but I think we need to challenge them down to junior high.
We can still, we can do that, but this is the product we have. There's no reason that we can't do that at Taylorville High School.
To me, that's just a shock.
How long is the math testing in?
Just the first year.
Oh, if we do that more, we'll know more about how we can increase the junior highs to get the high schools better. So, with only one year under our belt, it's tough to make any recommendations.
But we still have students in those lower tracks of math, as we indicated, that we have to start exposing to better curriculum.
But I think any way you can challenge them is-
And that's our plan. That's the integrated algebra and geometry. We were, before the SAT results even came out, we were already going to do that, so. That was our, that's, that's the plan. Unfortunately, we got the SAT scores, they're lower than we had hoped.
Now, if they start in the middle track, do they end up in any weighted math and reading classes at the end of their senior year? If they continue on?
Well, I mean, they-
I know in the upper track, you get a lot of weighted classes.
You go from pre-calculus to calculus and that kind of thing. So if you start in the middle track, you can work your way through.
I mean, because, I mean, that kind of can offset some of the parents' concerns with the lower grades, if they're going to weighted classes because of being a weighted class as an A in a low-tier class, so.
Mr. Andrew, what I showed you was just what's required of our-
I understand, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to grasp, how we can, so, get the parent's spears down a little bit by saying, hey, you have a chance to bring it up, even with a lower grade, because you're in a higher level class. So, to me, any way you can get them to understand that challenge of, is better than getting an A in a lowest level class, so. I mean, we got to do some sales to get them on that.
Dr. Firstnel's right. It is, it is our charge to challenge those kids, no matter what level, what track they're in. It's our duty to charge, to challenge those students to do their best, so. We've got our work cut out for us, no doubt about it, and we're going to, we're going to do it.
Thank you.
All right, now I need a motion to go into a closed session. Who first?
Mr. Asbury.
Mr. Asbury.
Yes. Yes. Going to close?
Okay, our administration has been busy working on getting folks to fill vacant positions in terms of where we're at. And we've got a couple of things. Mrs. Fizero is, she was here this evening, is retiring from second grade Stonington Elementary. Mr. Amer, who is the vocational teacher, is leaving us. He's got a great opportunity. He is going to become the principal at CACC. So, it's right up his alley with vocational programming. He's always wanted to be an administrator. And what a place, you know, with his vocational background, he was a good candidate and was successful in getting the job. We've currently advertised for the position, and we're working on filling that position in terms of that. We have a request for leave of absence, FMLA from Malargo. And then we have some change of assignments. As you remember, Cindy Hutchins submitted her retirement, and we're recommending Cheryl Covington, who is currently the Stonington Elementary Secretary, to the full-time attendance secretary at Taylorville High School effective five-thirty, twenty-seventeen. Went through the interview process. Mr. Hutchison and Mrs. German were involved in that. And it's basic, it's a very important position in terms of being able to handle skyward, and I feel very comfortable with Cheryl filling that position. Then we have, then Loria Euler, computer aide at Stonington, will become the secretary at Stonington. Then we have April Durbin, seventh grade math, will be going to the guidance counselor position. She is a certified guidance counselor. Will be in nice fit at Taylorville Junior High School. She was doing two periods of counseling this year in addition to her math, to see how that was going to flow. Then Heidi Durbin, who is currently a fifth grade teacher, will be going to seventh grade math at Taylorville Junior High School. And then we've got Melissa Phibus, who is a fourth grade teacher, will be going to sixth grade language arts at Taylorville Junior High School. And then we have Stephanie Smits, who's a reading aide, will be going to a reading teacher at North Elementary. And then we have Kristen Solomon, reading aide at North, will be going to fifth grade at Taylorville Junior High School. And then recommendation to employ will be Rachel Ward, musical director at Taylorville High School. And then we have Courtney D. Clark, fourth grade Memorial Elementary School, filling that. Then we have Catherine Whip Thompson, correct, Mrs. Brown, second grade Stonington Elementary. We were able to hire a gentleman to teach first grade at North Elementary, and that is a good thing, to try that. So Kevin Lovelace, first grade North Elementary School. Annie Machip?
McCallik.
Mike McCallik, yeah, there you go. Second grade North Elementary. And Nicholas Olfert's, English, Taylorville High School. Hayden Eldred, math, Taylorville High School. Amber Atkins, preschool teacher, Washington School Painter, remember, we run that. And then we have Sean Piper, half-time at Taylorville High School, social science. And then Ashley Lavall, eighth grade, language arts, Taylorville Junior High School. Jenny Campbell will be the secretary of memorial, filling in for Lori White's retirement. Angela Morrison will be the library aide. Julie Lilly resigned to become city clerk. And then Mary Vaughn will be the five-point-seven-five spot for Lori Alar. So those are our personnel. We are down to two positions left to hire for next year, a preschool teacher in Pena, and then Mr. Amer's position, and then Taylorville is fully staff for next year, which is a good thing. Unless we get any other surprises.
I have a motion to accept personnel. Mr. McCollum, second. Marbury, Lordville?
Mr. Asbury?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mr. Marburger? Yes. Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Mellon?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew?
Yes. Reporter Superintendent?
Yes. A couple of things. If you're interested in the ISAB conference, let Julie know, she can give you the information on that if you're interested. Mr. Asbury went last year. So if you're interested, let Julie know.
Yeah.
Okay. Let Julie know, and then we'll get it right this time. Okay, so you don't take Mrs. Fraley's stuff, and have that guy to mess. With that, once you complete your new board member training, Mr. Turner did turn his in, so once you get that, then you'll get some paperwork, then you turn that in, and you're all legal with us, okay? District registration this year is going to be at North Elementary, and it'll be the same type of situation where we have it broke out athmetically. We're doing that because of the construction project at Taylorville High School and what's taking place there. The auditor's going to start the second week of July, believe it or not, we're getting close to that. Mrs. German's working to get us at the end of the close and get us ready for the auditor. Construction projects, I did put in my update, we had two really good reports. Everything is on time, moving on schedule. Things are progressing nicely in terms of getting all of that work done. They started the inside project at, inside the gym on the west side, so everything is going, brick has been delivered, so things is moving. And then the HVAC site on the science wing, we couldn't ask for any smoother of, smoother of project with that going in. I mean, ceilings are high, they're not having to make any additional situations. If you're familiar with that, the chiller on the backside where that fence is at, that's all going to come out, we're going to scrap that. There's no reason to have an old abandoned chiller sitting out there, so we will be taking that, we will be doing that ourselves, okay? In terms of that situation. Sign project is moving accordingly with that situation. The STEM lab is moving along. The staff was in painting today. That's the great thing about teacher leadership, teachers that are motivated, they were in painting the room today and getting that all ready to go. I did talk a little bit about in my update too with the athletic trainers, it's not going to be any difference in that situation in terms of, St. John's went out of business, they're not doing that. So Springfield Clinic is who we had a contract with, with athletic training, will work with the boosters again, and the hospital didn't fulfill their part of it, but our boosters have stepped up to work with the district, and Mr. Heldon and I have, and Mr. Hutchison have that. So we will have training services available for our student athletes. That's very important with football, that we have trainers and those types of things with our student athletes in terms of that. In July, we will come back with the department heads, we will put that on the agenda, and we will have that broke out. In terms of that, I did talk about the Chrismont cornerstone, we have got that finalized today in terms of room usages, in terms of all of that, so I will be working on that. And there's no reason for negotiations this evening, I do not have any dates for DSPs, yet, so. In terms of that, that's my report. Mr. Andrew does have his committee of assignments for you.
I gotta keep all of these for myself. There you go, guys.
I tried to put people where they asked for, and then, I'll give chairs to people that have a little bit more expertise in those areas, as far as I could tell, which is pretty good, as far as I could tell, so. If there's anybody that has a reason that they want to get out of one or something, let me know. This was just how I thought everybody should sit, and, I mean, everybody comes to all the different committee meetings anyway, but this is just what I thought we needed him for.
For each new board member, that is highly recommended. Comes to all the committee meetings.
They're usually, usually either tied in with a regular meeting or something, and not very long, so.
We only do three a week.
Three a week. But the beauty of it is that everybody's well-formed at the committee meeting, it makes it do it quicker. Regular monthly meetings run, but yeah, it makes it a lot easier.
So, and the last piece, Mr. Turner too, I was visiting with Mr. Curtin, and I kind of gave him the one-on-one that we had previously, kind of, it was kind of a quick situation, but we need to schedule number two to where we can talk about the finances and the other pieces of it, and then, you know, enrollment projections, those types of things, and in terms of that, that segment of the, that segment of it, in terms of that. We have the presentation all put together as we begin to look at next year's budgeting, okay? We can then work through this year's budget, and then as we look to next year's budget. So that's the next piece, so, I don't know what your schedules are towards, you know, I'm pretty much open in the month of June.
We get back next week, so why don't I just stop by and we'll check calendars and see what happens?
Okay, let's do that, but you guys, you doing okay, Steve?
Yeah, okay. Pick a date and let me know.
I'm gone the whole week of the nineteen.
Okay.
And the twenty-seventh, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
Just don't schedule it.
Just don't schedule it.
Don't go to June, say.
Okay.
Whatever you say.
I will talk to you, okay? And we'll probably the last, maybe choose somewhere in.
Anyways.
Look, that's what I'm thinking, too, I'm setting some, what are you thinking?
The end, the last week, the last week. The third of your Friday.
Last week in June, Steve? Somewhere in there?
Fine, there's, last week in June?
Yeah.
Fine. Tell me if you did.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I don't know.
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine, you guys.
Wednesday, Thursday, I think, twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight sounds good. Twenty-eight sounds good.
That's my first pick.
And it'll bite you.
Okay.
Twenty-eight? You're good. Time you guys won. All the time.
And it was better for you, right? Six-thirty?
Six-thirty. Six-thirty on the twenty-eight. Okay. Done.
Wednesday, twenty-eight to June, at six-thirty?
Yep, that'll be for our.
You don't have to have, I was going to say.
That's mine, that's my area.
Can I move to adjourn?
Yes, you may, Mr. Andrew.
You adjourn, second. Ms. McGonagall, all in favor?
All right. You are adjourned.
You are adjourned.